Say a few words.
Oh, definitely, the mayor's always your next generation.
It's time whenever you're ready.
You know, it's really good, and there's one that's kind of slippy.
Hello, Andrew, how are you?
I'm splendid, Mayor, how about you?
Oh, wonderful. And that's a lie.
So say you sound real enthusiastic.
You just need to have a broad definition of splendid, that's all.
Thank you, that's an eternally liked response, and I appreciate it. We're almost ready, huh? I'm gonna call the meeting to order. What I'm gonna do is ask you to join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. After the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to have a moment of silence for our Americans that were murdered during the nine eleven. And I need to turn my mic on. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I have bronchitis tonight, so the person that best reads and speaks tonight is Vice Mayor Lon Turner. So he's gonna do all that. So I can only speak probably to the end of the thing there. So introduction, presentations, and proclamation. Proclamation declaring-
Do we want roll call first?
Do we want roll call? We all know who's here. Who's missing? Okay.
All of us, I think.
Sure, go ahead with the roll call.
All right, Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Miller is absent, and Councilmember Lane is absent, Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Best.
Here.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Croft.
Halfway here tonight, thank you. Okay, let me try that again, anything else?
No. One of your vice mayor would've caught it eventually.
Yeah, he'd probably slap me, though. Proclamation declaring September twenty eighteen as Suicide Prevention Month sponsored by the Suicide Prevention Coalition of Yabapai County. Would you all come on up, Mayor Turner, Vice Mayor Turner, he can be Mayor if he wants. Will come down and read the proclamation and come on up, thank you very much, I better, I'll come up. But I can't read.
Okay, whereas in the United States, an average one person dies by suicide every eight point six minutes. There are forty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-five suicide deaths in two sixteen, two thousand sixteen. And suicide is the tenth leading cause of death for people of all ages. And whereas men die by suicide three point five three times more often than women, women attempt suicide three times more often than men. And for every completed suicide, there are an estimated twenty-five attempted suicides. Whereas each person's death by suicide intimately affects minimally six other people. There are over two hundred thousand newly bereaved each year in Arizona. Twelve hundred and seventy-one Arizonans died by suicide in two thousand sixteen. And an average of one person dies by suicide every seven hours. Approximately seventy-six hundred friends and family members were changed forever by losing these people. Whereas Yabapai County's per capita suicide rate is the highest in Arizona, impacting both urban and rural communities. In two thousand seventeen, at least one hundred and one Yabapai County citizens ended their life by suicide in Yabapai County. Sixty-six point seven percent of the deaths by suicide involved the use of firearm, fifteen point seven percent points above the national average. And approximately nineteen hundred and fifty people attempted to die by suicide in two thousand seventeen. And whereas one citizen of Chino Valley and one from Paulden died by suicide in two thousand seventeen negatively impacted their family, friends, and community. And whereas many of the people who died by suicide may not have received affected behavioral health services for many reasons, including the difficulty for access services by healthcare providers trained in the best practices to reduce suicide risk, the stigma of using behavioral health treatment, and the stigma associated with losing a loved one to suicide. And wherever, whereas those who have lost a loved one to suicide and those who survived and attempted suicide need support and understanding as they grieve, but too often are unable to receive treatment and recovery services. And whereas the Suicide Prevention Coalition of Yabapai County is comprised of representatives of behavioral health organizations, law enforcement agencies, faith communities, health coalitions, and citizen advocates who are all dedicated to reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and suicide deaths and the pain for those affected by suicide deaths through providing resources, education, and support. Now therefore, I Lon Turner, Vice Mayor, Town of Chino Valley, on behalf of the Chino Valley Town Council, do hereby designate September Suicide Prevention Month in Chino Valley and urge everyone to learn how they can help because suicide prevention is everyone's business. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Chino Valley to be affixed this eleventh day of September, two thousand eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you to the Chino Valley City Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, thank you so very much. This, your proclamation has been joined with proclamations from many of the other municipalities in Yabapai County and as well as from the County Board of Supervisors proclaiming September as Suicide Prevention Month. That one statistic that Yabapai County has the highest suicide rate per capita in the state of Arizona, it's a statistic we need to change, all of us are involved in that process. The Coalition is dedicated to trying, moving everything we can, doing everything we can to reduce those numbers, both of the suicides themselves and the attempted suicides. Attempted suicides often go unrecognized, but out of those attempted suicides, often some of those folks will re-attempt later on and succeed. So their future possible suicides, we want to reduce those as well. We are working in conjunction with the State Suicide Prevention Plan, as well as the County Health Department has what they call Community Health Improvement Plans. And they've got, I think, four main focus areas that they're looking at. And underlying each one of those is a sub-focus, if you will, again, on suicide prevention. My brain just went blank. So I want to thank the folks that are standing with me tonight as well. They're just a small representation of all the folks that are working with me and our Coalition. We just started a, I'll call it the Birdie Valley contingent of our Coalition as well. We are trying to focus on the entire county. So again, thank you so very much for this, it's very important.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Presentation to the Town Council of a check from the Paulden Plunge by Ron Romley with Yabapai Regional Transit. And I think he's got a little show and tell tonight, too, don't you, Ron? So that you guys can see what your money's going for. All right, good. Okay, thanks. Good evening, Mayor and Council. A couple of months ago, I came in front of you and received a check from you to help this program, the Paulden Plunge, and support the buses going out to Paulden and picking up the kids. Now I brought one back for you. I've got about a six-slide presentation I'd like to show you. But first, I really want to, I really want to show what the Paulden Foundation is doing. Terry McPherson and Jane Anderson are the spark plugs of this event. Jane is sitting right there, Terry couldn't make it today. But they signed up ninety-four kids on the internet to be able to get into this program. They meet the bus every day. That gets tiring, every day. Mike, Councilman Best and myself are the primary drivers, but we have two others that when he can't make it because of softball or something, and I can't make it because of other reasons, we've got people to fill in for us, and they don't. They issue the tickets, they meet the bus, and they issue the tickets as before the kids get on the bus. And they also call the parents if there's a problem with the pool shutting down or something, some type of communication problem. My wife Sherry, who often goes with me when I drive, happened to notice the towels on the kids were tattered, torn, and just really not much there. So she notified one lady, or had a discussion with one lady who belonged to the Lioness. She took the message to the Lions and to the Antelope Garden Club, and we gave the Paulden Foundation thirty-six brand-new or new towels for the kids. The picture on the right-hand side shows some of the kids with their new towels.
Cool.
This is our fourth year on the Paulden Plunge. We had two thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars carryover from two thousand seventeen for the entry tickets. We, YRT used two hundred and twenty-five dollars of that for advertising and ticket printing. Pool donations were down a little bit this year compared to the year before, but thanks to the Quanas Club, when they had their auction, they donated fifteen hundred dollars to the program. And of course, the Town of Chino Valley donated seventeen solely for the bus expense. We drove approximately fifty days, we traveled twenty-five hundred miles. Our total bus cost equated to approximately sixteen hundred and fifty dollars. We transported four hundred and eighteen passengers. There were three hundred and ninety-four kids that used the pool. The difference in the numbers was the adults. There were some adults that came, either they can't qualify for this program, so they either paid for themselves, or if they couldn't, then the Paulden Foundation found the money to be able to allow the parents to go in at the same time and pay the bus trip. We had over four hundred volunteer hours. Yabapai Regional Transit and the Paulden Foundation is pleased to provide the Town of Chino Valley a check for eleven hundred and eighty-two dollars, which beats what we gave you last year. So, the kids wanted me to be sure and tell you, thank you, Chino Valley, for all your support, especially the little girl next to the windows. She was ready to go swimming that day. So Mr. Mayor, if you'll come down, I will present this check to you. You don't have to say anything, so. Take the money. I never try to say anything around you. Thank you very much, and we'll put this safely and look at the next year. Good, that's fine. That'll be your bank statement, we appreciate it. And I think that a couple, a couple of- Ron? Yeah, okay. A couple- No. It's hard to shut me up. Couple, about a month ago, I came in front of the council and read a letter of thank you from the Paulden Foundation and all the kids of Paulden. They thoroughly enjoy this. Even though it was four hundred and eighteen rides in transit terms, it was eight hundred and thirty-six people. So, anyway, thank you very much, we appreciate all the support from the council and from Scott Bruner and from the town itself. Thank you very much for you guys doing this. This is one of the best programs we have in town, so, especially with the kids, we need to have them come in the pool. Thank you, thank you. Nah, you can buy me a new car. Yeah, if you would, please.
Okay, we'll move on to Call to the Public. Call to the Public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on an issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged, individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for Call to the Public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Do we have anybody for a Call to the Public? Okay, we got one person coming up.
John, last name Garden, G-A-R-D-E-N.
Can you repeat that one more time at the mic, please?
Last name Garden, G-A-R-D-E-N, first name John.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Two upcoming events here in Chino Valley, one was on the front page of our local paper today. Most of the article was on page eight. We started a new 501(c) nonprofit last year, actually, I wasn't part of the Chino Valley Police Foundation. And they're having their first luau dinner that are prepared by our local law enforcement officers up at Memory Park, which will be one week from this Saturday, on the twenty-second, from four to seven PM. There's gonna be a fifty-fifty draw and a raffle. You can, I think you can get the tickets online, or you can call the police department directly. There's a nine-two-eight-six-three-six-four-two-two-three, extension eight, to participate if you'd like. What they're gonna be doing is they're gonna be raising funds for some IFAC kits. Each school in Chino Valley has two of them right now. Their goal is to put one in each classroom. Our local law enforcement firefighters, they all have them on their rigs. And they're like a stop-the-bleed pack, it's more like a first aid kit on steroids, you know, something bigger than a scrape or a burn or something like that, whether to attend to students where they need immediate attention. And they can render it right there on the school grounds. Some of the teachers and the staff members have already been trained, but their goal is to train them all at each school in Chino and try and get one of these keys and kits in each and every classroom, which I think is a great thing. So there's, you can also go to chinovalleypolicefoundation.inc, I-N-C. There should be some information there on it. That's one week from this Saturday, from four to seven PM. Also, we have coming up, I'm not sure if it's our fourth or our fifth, I've only worked the last three, but we have National Night Out coming up, and that's October second. That's gonna be on a Tuesday night from five to at least eight PM, I believe, maybe longer. I just spoke to a couple people that are involved in that, they've already purchased food for fifteen hundred people, so it's a pretty good-sized event. There's gonna be a lot of booths, there's gonna be a free raffle there. A lot of local businesses are beginning donating stuff for that, too. There's gonna be plenty of music, you know, games, that sort of thing. It's gonna be, it's a great thing for the kids, I enjoy working at it every year. So those are two events that are coming up. And as far as the National Night Out, that's probably gonna come up in our local paper in the next upcoming week or two. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have my tickets to the luau in my grass skirt, so. Councilmembers? And we have a dancer over here, so that- Stand up, Cory. I take care of everything.
You dance one time.
Yeah.
Anyone else for Call to the Public? Okay, Call to the Public is closed. We have nothing for response to the public. So we'll go on to current event summaries and reports. This item is for information only. The Mayor, any Councilmember, or Town Manager may present a brief summary or report of current events or ask a staff member to provide the same. Presentation on information requested by the Mayor and Council will be made and questions answered, no action will be taken. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody ahead of time for, that came out, that helped, helped put together, or had anything to do with Territorial Days. We did get, evidently, many, many have asked us if the funds for free rides and activities for Territorial Days came from the town canceling the fireworks. The answer this year is no. Last year, when we canceled fireworks because of the Goodwin Fire, we put the money towards activities and rides at Territorial Days. It was such a hit, we budgeted money for the same this year. We had budgeted seven thousand, for as much as seven thousand for games and activities, and ended up spending a little over five thousand. I'd like to thank the following people and organizations for wonderful Territorial Days event. Chino Valley Chamber of Commerce, Lions Club, especially Bud Hanen, Lioness Club, Chino Valley PD, Chino Valley Parks Crew, Chino Valley Recreation Department, Hero Rentals, Jim Schultz for the cool ride for the council float, Iron Horse Food Truck, all the vendors. Now, Lioness sponsored the vendors, so we don't have that list to actually name them off. All of the businesses and organizations that participated in the parade, and also Scott and Cindy for all their hard work. Is there anybody else? Pardon?
We also, the Mayor had asked to, that we could thank the people that participated with the mud run, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see the second page. Okay, we'd like to personally thank the following people and organizations for their help in the Chino Valley Mud Run. The Pratt Board, Lions Club, Chino Valley High School Boys and Girls Soccer, Parks Crew, Family Medical Walk-In, Chino Valley, FNP Sharon Charmilio.
I don't know how to say her name.
That's as close as I can get. Affinity RV, Word of Life, Chino Valley Recreation Department, and of course, again, Cindy and Scott. Sponsors, The Hike Shack, Olson's Grain, Alvarez Tire, Ace Hardware, APS, KKL-D, Anytime Fitness, Overflow Coffee, B-W-E-A-R, they discounted T-shirts, and Tom's Print and Sign. So thank you, everybody, for your participation in the mud run. Okay, any other reports on this side?
No.
Nope? Please?
I have a couple staff members who are gonna give reports. I just want to echo as well, thanks to the Parks and Recreation Department and Scott and Cindy. Two back-to-back weekends of events was quite a bit for them and for our community, but they were very well done. Thank you.
Okay, so are staff members gonna give reports now?
Let's see, item C.
Oh, okay. Okay. Did I need to read that?
Sure.
Okay. So we got Status Update regarding Public Works Projects and Issues Related to Road Two South, Annual Chip Seal, Road One East Extension, and Ball Field Lighting, Frank Marbury.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Got a few slides, since Councilman Miller's not here, I think I can go through them, so. Just wanna update you on-
At least without harassment, right?
Right. So, got a few to go through here, but it's good, I think it's some work being done in the town with a couple of issues. So, I think as we go through, if you have any questions, stop me or ask at the end, or whatever you want to do, would be fine with me. So the first project that we've completed is in relation to the Road One East project. We used some plug control money to put in some low-water crossings. And we've got the highlighted areas over here to the right, there was three of them in total. And what a low-water crossing is, it's a little bit more fortification to the roadway. We put in some concrete walls on either side of the roadway so that when the water in a low spot or a swale or stream crosses the roadway, it fortifies that so it doesn't blow out the road. And we let that project and bid that, and it finished up. In addition to, this is some of the concrete going in, and this just kind of shows the dirt layout of after the concrete. But in addition to that project, what we had done, since the concrete crews were out there, we needed to finish up at the Kalanick Roundabout as part of the ADOP project. We need to finish up that one, I call them pork chop islands on the east side. And it worked best to get the concrete crew that was doing the low-water crossings to do that job. So that's the reason that was in that project, too. APNS was a contractor on the project, and it finished on time and within the contract amount, so. This is a look at the completed crossings with the asphalt in them. In addition, you'll see in one of the later projects, that's the rest of the black is asphalt millings that were being placed as part of the roadway project. Which is this project, which is the Road One East Extension. To finish up that project, we brought in Sunderland Asphalt, who had Via Sun as a sub to take the big pile of millings from the Highway Eighty-nine project and crush those up into something like road base. And we finished placing those, we were supposed to finish placing those today, they had some equipment, so they'll finish up in the morning. Had some equipment problems. But they should finish up tomorrow morning. We had enough millings to place four inches, we had originally worked the road with some town crews, put four to six inches of normal gravel base on there. And on top of this, we've got four full inches of asphalt millings. And on top of that, next week, beginning Monday, they will apply a double chip seal surface on top of that. So it should be one of the better roads in town when all is said and done. These are some pictures of the placing of the millings. We've had really good luck with how they're being placed. Even just crushing them and placing them, I think it's gonna provide a good road surface. The next road project that we're almost complete with is our twenty eighteen chip seal project. For that project, we had a couple things going on. You'll see over to the right, the red is areas, if I can get the mouse to work. It's jumping a little bit, but the red areas, we actually brought in the pulverizing machine, which you can see on the left, to pulverize those roads. They were chip seal roads with not much base on them, no sort of engineered section. So we pulverized those roads. And again, the town crews brought in, we had aggregate base brought in, and the town crews placed that. And then we had APNS come in through a competitive bid and place a double layer of chip seal on those red roads. The two blue roads there were already in decent enough shape that we could save those roads. So we just placed a single layer of chip seal on those roads to try and save those roads for a later date. Some of the pictures from that, these are, this is how the process works. For those that aren't familiar with chip seal, you lay down a layer of oil emulsion, which is oil mixed with water. And then after that, you place just a layer of chips or kind of square rock down on top of that, roll it in and sweep it. And then for the double chip seal, you do it again with a- roll it in and sweep it. And then for the double chip seal, you do it again with a slightly different-sized rock. This is a picture of Road One East. Both of these pictures are after pictures of kinda what it looks like after. We're still gonna put a layer, a fog seal layer of oil on top of that to help lock those chips in, and that'll turn it black. This is Outer Loop Road. The left, you'll see kind of a before picture showing all the cracking and distress. And on the right is the chip layer afterwards. And we used, on these single chip roads, we used a slightly different kinda oil, hoping to get a better penetration into those cracks to hold those roads together a little better. So we'll see how it works. Some other jurisdictions have had good results with it, trying to stretch those dollars. This is Chino Drive, a cul-de-sac that saw some damage maybe from previous projects, or at least garbage trucks. And on the left is before, you can see even the dirt coming through. And on the right is the after picture of the chip seal. This is Reed Road. On the left, you see, we started to wind up paving one pothole at a time. And on the right is the finished product there, minus the fog coating. And then finally, Road Four North. You can see all of the cold mix the road crews have put in over the time. All those dark spots are potholes that they filled by hand. And on the right is the road after it's been pulverized and reworked, and the chip seal placed. Next project is one that we're working on. It's Road Two South Drainage. I wanted to put this picture up here to show that this problem's been here for a while. That picture's actually from 2006. So it's not a short-term problem that's been recent. It's been there for a while. And so what we've got, if you look on the left, that's a kind of a view from the west, looking back towards the signal that's now there. And on the right is an aerial view showing the, if you can see the damp spot right there. That's where the water tends to stand and gets fairly deep during storms. So we're having trouble getting the water from this area and flowing towards the ADOT road, because all the drainage in that area generally furloughs northeast, if you think about direction. So that'd be the top right of the picture, is the general area, the way the water drains. So that roadside ditch on the north side there, and I believe the business might be the Tire Doctor. If you're just trying to find it, it's between the Tire Doctor and Maverick. This picture we found on Google Earth, they're turning out to be a good resource for research, actually shows in 2011, you can see remnants of a roadside ditch on the north side of the road there. Still not draining great, but there was a ditch there keeping the roadside dry. We've looked at some options to try and solve this problem, but in the immediate future, to take care of the problem short-term, we're gonna look at notifying the property owner and business owner, letting them know what we're doing, trying to coordinate business access, and try and reestablish that ditch. Because if you go back to that aerial picture, this picture is from 2015, and you can see that the drainage problem, there was some work done in this ditch area that actually filled that ditch in. And in 2011, the ditch was there. So we're gonna try and reestablish that ditch line the best we can in the immediate future. Now for long-term, on Road Two South, we're gonna work with ADOT to try and work on some mitigation measures to keep the water out of that road in the first place as much as possible. Currently, there's a detention pond that I've labeled the Maverick Pond here, which is a long skinny one along the parking lot that handles all the storm runoff for the development of the Maverick Station to retain that water to historic runoff. But if you look on the right, that little cutout in the wall is actually a drainage structure, is the outlet of that detention pond, which comes straight out over the sidewalk onto Two South. So what we wanna do is try and work with ADOT. Since all of the water generally flows towards the ADOT roadway, they're willing to work with us on accepting some of that water, maybe on the south side of the road, and keeping it from getting in the road in the first place. But we need to do some engineering work to make sure everything's taken care of, and that we don't create more problems in this ADOT pond, which is over here on the right. And the highway, of course, is the priority for ADOT. We would have to be, have a permit to do all of this work. So we're gonna work closely with them, and they're willing to work with us to try and do what they can. So we're trying to keep water from going at the blue arrow where it is now, and we wanna move it towards the red arrow as much as possible. The one other issue is there's three large drain pipes which carry water from the property to the west of the Maverick Station, and outlet it just to the right of this cutout here, which we're not sure we can do much about that. But we'll also have an engineer look at that and see any measures we can look for and budget for in the future to mitigate that. So I know that may have taken a while, but that's what we're looking at, trying to do short-term. First priority is try to protect the road and get it as dry and safe as possible for the traveling public, and then work on preventing the water in the first place. And then lastly, we wanted to update you on the ball field lighting. We're working with some contractors and getting prices to light Field Four. And that's the highlighted field here in the southwest corner of the four ball fields at the community center that will light that. And we hope to have something to counsel on the September twenty-fifth meeting. If we don't, if the prices don't come in, and there's any sort of hiccups, we may have to push that one meeting. But we're trying to get it to you in the next meeting. So those prices, we originally priced Field Three over here to the right, but we're gonna go back to Field Four, which is, apologize for any mistakes or misinterpretations of that. Hopefully, the lighting will be the same cost or lower as what we had first planned. And with that, that's the end of my presentation.
I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
One on the ball field lighting. So, the company was awarded that bid for Three, is that correct?
I think it's technically a cooperative bid that we're planning on using, and I think that's still subject to council's final approval on that.
Okay, so that wasn't actually awarded prior to changing to Field Four?
No.
Okay, okay. So, so is the whole thing going out for a whole rebid? Or is this contractor that had the low bid before coming, massaging his to say what it would be?
Right. It was more of a staff-level miscommunication on the ball fields.
I understand that.
So what we're looking at that is, we got a price for Field Three, and I just wanted to let council know what the delay was, and why it hadn't come to council already. And once we get the price finalized for Field Four, it's still the same cooperative contract. I just don't have which town it is in front of me that we use that with, but it's similar to the one I did for Road One East, where we used a Buckeye contract that had cooperative language in it. So we'll bring that contract with cooperative language to the council and the town attorney for approval, along with the proposal with the prices.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Fred.
Okay, report regarding recent community services programs and events, Mr. Scott Bruner.
Evening, mayor and council. Give you the update on our summer activities. I think Vice Mayor Turner's pretty much covered everything for us as he went through on his report, so we're in pretty good shape. We do have a small, quick little video that was taken by one of our board members, B., and we'll just show you that. So for those that didn't get a chance to get out to the mud run, you can see how truly it was really a family event and the success of that. So this isn't very long, but give you an idea. It's what we thought was gonna... A family, a family event with families going out. They're not really necessarily running, but walking. And then the kids will run up and jump into the mud, and the parents kind of reluctantly go in and follow behind. And by the end, they're all having fun. Go ahead. Thank you, Jamie.
That's great.
Pretty successful family event. So, we pretty much, like I said, Vice Mayor Turner's pretty much covered everyone we needed to thank. And you've covered the Territorial Days. There's just one more I'd like to give you an update on, and that's our pool attendance. As you know, earlier in the year, mayor and council approved the hike, and we made some, or some fee increases. And we also made some changes, no sessions. And we let the one and two-year-olds in free, and of course, parents and grandparents that were watching, the children, their children didn't have to pay. They put a wristband on it, and that's all from the request of the public, so we're listening. So our totals came in higher than we've had in five years. You can't see these totals, but we had our, and I'm not gonna read, break it down to every program that we had, but we had forty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-seven general admission entrance fees, and that exceeded our total from last year of forty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-four. Everything else we exceeded. Concessions, state study, we exceeded programs, aquatic rental. And so last year, and this is, these are money figures. The two-hundred, or the 2017 total was seventy-four thousand, two-ninety-nine. And this year's total, again, we did raise the rates, was seventy-nine thousand, four-twenty-nine. So what that really breaks down into is roughly, our attendance last year for 2017 was right around a little over fourteen thousand, and this year for 2018 was fifteen thousand, three hundred. And of course, we have to give a nod to Mr. Romly, who added four hundred kids with the Paulden Plunge to that, and that certainly does help, and we thank you. And I thank you, mayor and council. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, move on to the consent agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Anyone wanting to remove anything?
No.
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 Okay, can you read the consent agenda, please?
Don't adjourn yet.
This has been a swell meeting.
Yeah.
It did swell.
Swell.
All set?
Yep.
Okay, we're out of executive session. No action was taken.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion adjourned. Second, we've got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a good evening.
It's been fun.